On Tuesday, January 17th, I'd like to call to order. I do have the pen. I'd like to call to order the meeting of Lancaster's Select Board. Remind folks this is an open meeting that's being recorded and broadcast by our good friends at Sterling Lancaster Meeting TV. Want to do a roll call real quick as we start the meeting. Alex Turner, are you here?
I am here.
Jason, are you here?
Here.
Okay, and I am here as well. Well done. We are all here. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for our meeting of January the 3rd, 2023.
I have the motion to include the minutes of Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023.
Second it. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve minutes?
Minutes look great. We attached the Neshoba Building Project pamphlet, which is fine, hunky dory. I just thought, I gathered these were attached. Is that, no?
That's because we're meeting with them next.
That's another, okay. Not to worry.
It just was right after the minutes.
Okay, so no, just so moved.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye, Jason.
Aye.
Aye. Three, zero, zero on the minutes. Hooking right along. Scheduled appearances. Well, hello. We have a scheduled appearance by the Neshoba Regional School District Superintendent to discuss, if I have a discussion regarding the high school building proposal and an update on fiscal forecasts and budget projections for 2024.
Mr. Chair and Board.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here today. Yes, we are excited to come briefing on the updates on the school building project. I'm going to bring to you, if you don't mind, hot off the presses.
Bring it right along.
Get accustomed to what we are calling the Board Brief. This first brief that I'm presenting to you is the overall brief. And this brief just gives you some basics on the project. The second brief, which came out this afternoon at 3:00, has the final draft, so your hands are the first to touch it.
Oh my God, it's still warm.
Yes, so thank you for indulging us and as we are moving along with the project throughout...
It doesn't have to say its name and address, it doesn't look like it's right, but yeah, I know we know.
Percounting Superintendent, Neshoba Regional School District. So as you look at the first Board Brief, this Board Brief was our initial brief that we handed out at the public forum on January 29th at Neshoba Regional High School. It gives a general, overall scope of why we need the project. So it's, if you will, sort of a setup document for the purpose of why we began the process of asking the question of, do we need a new Neshoba Regional High School and how do we pay for that building? And then the second brief, as we've moved along through the process, really is more acute to the most recent meeting. It gives just a very brief project status update along with a focus on funding the project. And that's the part I'll just brief you quickly on tonight, our attorney.
Can you pause just briefly?
Absolutely.
Can folks hear the superintendent?
I'm just going to text if they couldn't.
I'm assuming from the same person I did, but I just want to see if it's a...
Coming out like it's very fondly, very fondly.
Put your podium a little closer. There we are.
It is very difficult to hear.
All right, well, we're going to try this now. He's virtually...
How does that sound now? Is my voice sounding?
That is better.
Okay, perfect.
Great. Okay, so the project status update, you can see there's a conceptual rendering of the building here. That is not what the actual building is going to look like. We actually had a working group meeting today as those drawings continued to evolve, as we have conversations with local Bolton officials. We most recently had a meeting with conservation officials because the building is really locked in due to the Tennessee Pipeline, the existing building, and the wetland areas. It's very locked into where the location can be. And so that'll continue to develop, so you'll see this grow and change throughout the Board Briefs throughout the spring, knowing that we're coming with estimates on the project in the middle of May. So in next month's briefing, we'll come to you with the most recent work of the committee. Funding the project also appeared on the meeting that evening. Our attorney, Peter Mello, came and advised the committee on statutory regulations around incurring debt for a regional school system. And it's cited in Chapter 71, 16, dash D and dash N in Mass. General Law. And basically what that means is the school committee votes to incur debt. And then, once they vote to incur that debt, they are required to notify the chair of each Select Board of the participating towns that they voted to incur debt within seven days of that vote. Once the chair has received notice, the chair, along with the town administrator, have a 60-day period to then put that in front of the voters. That is 7116D. 7116N is a second methodology, which is called the regional methodology. And 7116N is an actual collection, it's a ballot vote of the three towns in one voting body at which that election would be run at the cost of the school system. So through our regional agreement and defer of how we're doing, we will be moving forward with ultimately 7116D in putting this forward in front of our towns, knowing that 7116N is a provision that could potentially be utilized later. But we would do that under the guidance of, you know, our legal counsel where we are in that process at the time. So that's just a very brief update on our most recent school building committee meeting and also solicit any questions you might have there.
You'll take my colleagues first, do you have any questions?
I do. So the vote, what I'm seeing in the pamphlet here is the vote will take place sometime between September or December 2023 this year, is that accurate?
Yes. I can provide some light to that as well, Mr. Allison. It behooves us to have the vote sooner than later. So I'll take down the hypothetical pathway of an approval. The sooner approval were to happen for the building, the better because we also voted a CM at risk, construction management at risk methodology that Attorney Gleason, our chair, spoke about last time. And because of escalating costs, if we can get that vote sooner, we can begin those processes, securing materials sooner, and with the cost of inflation right now, it behooves us to do so. So with the, we expect to get final estimates of the project sometime mid-May, meaning that before we break for summer, they would be presented to our school committee, at which point during the summer term, end of July, first week of August, we would convene to take a vote to incur debt, to start the 60-day window. And we want to wait at least till that point because we don't, obviously don't want to move forward with that during the summer term when people are at vacation homes and other places. That would happen in the month of September, in an ideal scenario, but you know, things change, estimations coming differently, you find the magic frog on the land that you have to figure out how to mitigate, you know, so there, you know, those unpredictable variables that come up may impact that, but our hope is September.
Absolutely. So the voting process, you talked about two, 16 Delta and 16 Nancy. So the 16 Delta is each town will have a vote.
Yes.
And those will be independent bodies, and then if two out of the three towns vote yes, then it goes through, which is typical of our regional agreement, is that correct?
Actually, Mr. Allison, you're probably invoking what we do to approve the annual budget, the omnibus budget. It's actually different when we're incurring debt for capital costs. It would have to be an approval of all three towns. And 16D is a provision where it goes before the residents in a town meeting fashion, as opposed to 16N, it goes in front of the residents in a ballot fashion. So let's play a hypothetical of, we put this forward in the timeline I described, and you host a special town meeting sometime in September. Each of the three towns would need to vote to incur the debt in order for us to incur the debt, because the school district has voted to incur it, and it's the voters that are saying, yes, you can, or no, you can't.
Awesome. So thank you for that. I believe one of Lancaster's greatest assets is its school district. Folks like you, helpers like Mr. Gleason, all contributing to the greatness that is our school district. You may not be aware, but Lancaster is currently in some financial challenging times. So I would ask to continue doing the great job that you're doing, coming to us, distributing these pamphlets and asking questions. I believe, in my opinion, Lancaster will have a much harder time deciding that vote than maybe some of the other towns, and since it requires a 3-0, please invest that time. I, as an individual, am for this, but money, schools, and all of that isn't free, so we have to figure out how we're going to pay for it. Thank you.
Mr. Allison, may I, Mr. Chair?
Sure. In response to that, I couldn't agree with you more, which is why we want to come before this board on a monthly basis. We've also reached out to the councils on aging of all three towns, and we have appointments set up with them to appear in some, in front of our residents, and we'll be looking for more opportunities, including tours of the current building that we're going to be scheduling this spring on a couple of Saturdays, and we'll do them at a couple of different times so that people have some choices. So we're going to be, we have lots of activities planned in the schedule to get people sort of boots-on-the-ground educated about why it is that we need a new Neshoba Regional High School.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you have any questions?
No, thank you for the overview and the refreshers. You spoke of following 16D, which you just recapped, and reserving 16N. What does that mean? So if it... Just let you...
Pardon me.
No, please.
Yes, 16D is the methodology that we use, and it's outlined in the regional agreement for incurring debt. It is, so for instance, when the high school auditorium project went through in 1998, 16D was utilized to fund that project. All three of the towns approved unanimously to do the, what was at the time, the renovation project. The 16N provision can be utilized if you, in multiple ways. Could my vote go out with 16N? Massachusetts law allows for that. Our regional agreement states we should use 16D, that's what we're going to use. However, 16N is at the disposal of, in the event that, say, the 16D, one of the three towns did not vote to support the high school, you could still conduct a regionalized election ballot of all three towns, and it would be a collective vote of the region, and that's the basics of 16N. So the MSBA Board will be meeting the first week of August, I believe Attorney Gleason, August 7th?
Yes.
And at that point, assuming, because we submit to the MSBA in June 27th the scope of the project, assuming approval on August 7th, that begins 120-day cycle for the MSBA for which we have to come back with, to them, with funds for the project, approval to fund the project. So that takes us to about Thanksgiving time, which means if we had an election in September, there'd be time in the interim there to host a system-wide regional ballot election, if that's the course that we, the school committee were decide to take. But we cannot do that without a vote of the school committee. And is it, thank you, Attorney Gleason, a 2/3 approval, I thought that was the case.
Okay. So to recap, if D fails, then that is your fallback.
Yes.
Providing the school committee, 2/3 of the school committee agree with that approach, and everything would have to be done before Thanksgiving-ish.
Yeah, exactly. Now, in the event that it didn't happen before the 120-day window, and let's say that were to fail, there is a provision to the MSBA that you can appeal within 10 days at the end of the 120-day period to extend your window. But to do that, you would have to supply, this is why our election failed, this is the remedy that we think we can apply to convince our voters to then bring the project forward, and they will extend your window. We're actually familiar with this in the town of Lancaster because this is the methodology by which the Minute Man project was funded. For those of you that have those long memories, you'll remember it took several attempts to get to the funding of that, that project ultimately.
Do you have any other questions?
Not as time now.
I just have a couple on timing questions. You mentioned at the outset that the school committee will vote to incur the debt, they'll have seven days to inform whoever's the chair, and then we have 60 days in which to have our town meeting, is that right?
Yes.
Do we have any sense, based on the mass school building, like when that meeting is, does that then trigger the meeting of the school committee? Like when, when do we think the 60 days will begin roughly?
So we don't know that yet because the school committee has not set a date in the summertime for that meeting, so it would be presumptuous.
Does it have to be before, I'll ask it this way, does it have to be before the state agrees to?
No, it does not. So we can vote to, so the project is going to be submitted on June 27th, and there is a provision that you can put it before your voters, even before the MSBA. But the timing of it is going to be about the same time. So to paint that window of a September bandwidth, to ultimately have town meeting to vote on the building, we would need to have an election, excuse me, a vote to incur debt by the school committee the last week of July, first week of August. So that's right about the same time as the MSBA.
And then we, because our requirement's only two weeks to post them. Okay, that's helpful. And then on N, which hopefully we don't get to N, but if we do get to N, is it, it's not Lancaster voters are 52% for and 48% against, it's, all of those are collected, all the yeses are in one pile of the noes, and if it's...
One person, one vote.
If Lancaster votes overwhelmingly no, but the others outnumber us on yeses, it goes through.
Correct.
Okay, okay. That's very helpful. And then a couple of things. First of all, I appreciate, I heard this morning you were going to the COA, so I appreciate the outreach across the community, because I think it's very, it's very important to do that, and I echo Jason's comment on continuing to encourage you to do as much of that as possible. And then as you get closer on specifics on costs, the, the better for us to explain to the taxpayers and the residents here what the impact of them is going to be, the more information we get from you, the better it's going to be for us to be able to calculate, here's what the rough impact will be on you as a taxpayer, on your average household. I know you've given some, but as we get closer and closer to, to real numbers, it's going to be very important, and we can talk about this in your regular visits to see us, but we talk about the budget at every meet, the overall budget at every meeting, because it's important to remind folks what's coming down the pike, and so this is an important piece, that the more, as you start fine tuning the numbers, if we can get those and we can start having those conversations through meetings like this with residents, that'd be helpful.
I think there's an important piece I can share with you right now, that I neglected to include in my report, and that is when we appeared before the MSBA just recently to be approved for Phase 4 of the project, simultaneously, the board voted that day to increase the square footage cap from $360 a square foot to $393 a square foot. So what I'll remind all the residents on the Land's Board is that when we hear reimbursement rate of 48% from MSBA, that is not a straight conversion.
Right.
It is not a straight conversion, and because it's 48% of reimbursable costs, and there are costs that are not reimbursable under the project, oftentimes projects come in their twenties and low thirties, ultimately in terms of the amount MSBA is covering in that process. But with the, the news that they, they raised that ceiling, that was good news for us, that's going to have a significant impact, along with the decision to go CM at risk also is going to help us manage those costs well. But we will certainly bring any cost updates to you that come out of our school building committee meetings.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions from any member of the board? Do you have any questions?
Just the last follow-up on that, it's the MS, so my understanding from the last climate, which sounds encouraging, the MSB Board is who you're referring to, is allowing for greater, essentially greater space, greater square feet to be reimbursable, is that correct?
More dollars per square foot.
Per square foot, okay. Okay.
So a lot of square foot allowance is still going to be roughly the same amount, but the dollars will be more, which is great.
That's good news.
Well, thank you. Do you have any questions for us? Mr. Gleason, anything?
I'll just be very briefly, I told the attorney, I turned it down. Old habits, that I wasn't going to say anything, but I guess I'm going to be looked at as long as I can. Just to follow up on what Superintendent Downing said, in addition to the square footage increase, the MSB also at the same meeting voted to increase the site cap rate from 10, 8% to 10%. So for addition, for initial site work and what have, it's another 2% increase on that. The only thing I was going to say is, and Superintendent Downing did allude to this, it just, I want to impress upon the Select Board the importance of this. These tours that we're going to be setting up for this, for the spring, they're essentially for the public, but mostly geared towards our governing officials, Select Boards, FinComs, Cable Advisory, I don't care, just, but I want to encourage the three of you, Ms. Hodges and anyone in the town of Lancaster, you really need to take this tour.
Yeah.
I was fortunate enough to have a sort of semi-personalized tour of parts of this building which I know that even longtime employees of the district have never seen, the pump house, the sewage station, you know, the incinerator room. And as I keep telling everybody, I'm going to leave it at this, pray for rain on the day of this tour, and you will get to see the high school and its beautiful living color. It is an amazing sight to see when it's raining. I couldn't believe what I saw, so.
I feel as if you're being sarcastic, but that's...
Yeah, exactly. The incinerator room, it's the boiler room, but they also have the old incinerator in there, and I couldn't believe what I was seeing coming through the ceiling, and it was just a downpour of water, so, thank you very much, Mr. Gleason.
I will add that to my evening prayers.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may add one more thing, I want to just indulge the committee just on one last thing that the MSBA cited for the Neshoba Regional School District. And to ensure the voters that we're being responsible, and we're thinking about the educational program that we're going to deliver to the students of our three towns. The MSBA committed the educational plan that was put forward for the vision of our new school system, and asked permission if they post our plan on their website for other regional school systems to follow as a model for future projects that they're considering in their town. And I don't say that because we want a gold star here at Neshoba Regional School District. I'm saying that because the thoughtfulness around the educational program it is that we all want for our kids that came out of the community conversations that we had, the conversations we had with our educators, and the conversations that we had with our students, of which Mr. Gleason was present on that day, all contributed to the construction of that plan. So we're not building just a building, we're building the future educational platform for these students that is going to be a 50, 60-year solution for us, and so that's why it's going to be very important for us to fund this project ultimately.
Well, that is a good feather in your cap, and please thank everybody who participated in that process and developing that, because it's always good to, it's always good to be the example for the rest of the Commonwealth. You should ask the state if, every time someone clicks on it, if we could get like 10 bucks.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
A good way to fund the project.
Yeah, exactly. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, thanks, sure. All right. Thank you. Now, I'm going to... Next, public comment, yes. Yes, next would be boards, committees, and departments, but we have none, so it's public comment. We go to folks in the room first, if they are interested in commenting, and then we go to the board. Everyone has, is given three minutes to comment, and again, we ask that folks are respectful of each other and speak to, speak your issues without attacking people and going after folks, whether they be residents or town staff, treat everybody with the respect you would like to be treated with, and the basic rules of thumb. So would you like to go?
Ah, sure.
And when you speak those, name and address to start off for the record, so hit it.
My name is Ralph Gifford. I grew up in Lancaster. Alex has known me for longer than she probably cares to, well...
It's been a long time, Ralph.
And Steve, I've known you for a long time. Jason, I don't know if I've had the opportunity to meet you in the past. I served on the Board of Health for many years, more than a decade. I only left town service to start a business. I've been blessed, it's worldwide, international. If you drive a new car anywhere in the world today, our software has been involved in design. If you use Whirlpool appliances, if you go for surgery, I mean, we touch your lives in so many ways. I realized in light of the recent vote to have a town meeting on a Saturday for the first time in my life, that I have been remiss in not being more involved in town government. To disenfranchise a sizable portion of our population, including nearly all of our minority population, nearly all black people in this town are Adventists, I'm a Seventh-day Adventist, is the kind of thing that I would expect from other states where there are certain agendas to disenfranchise black voters, for example, not the kind of thing that I would expect here in Lancaster. And I am here in a sentence to make an apology. I have been very busy growing the business, and I just, I knew I had to do that, to do that business, but I also have a debt to this town, and I want to show up, I want to understand what's going on, I want to be here. That's it.
Thank you very much, Ralph, appreciate it. Justin Smith, name and address. You are next.
Thank you. I, sorry, I had a hard time getting my unmute there.
That's all right.
So Justin Smith, Fort Turner, excuse me, Fort Turner Lane. I'm submitting my public comment tonight on the agenda item seeking to waive the hearing for the earth product removal permit for Fort Pond Road LLC. My comments tonight are not really directed at the applicant specifically, they're really an appeal to the Select Board to consider the process of earth product removal permits and the fees involved. Earth product removal operations involve some of the greatest impacts to Lancaster's natural resources, citizens' health, environment, and could impact our bottom line quite significantly. I joined other residents who have spoken up as of late to request that the process for earth product removal permits be reviewed, including the permit fees and the granting board. In many other towns, earth product removal permits are a specialty permit overseen by a specialty board. Many other towns also require greater permit fees. Many businesses have gotten quite wealthy off of the earth products that Lancaster's allowed mine, but the town is paid for the impacts of the heavy trucks traveling our roads. Just as the new town administrator benchmarked and adjusted the costs for residents to request copies and documents through the public record request process, Lancaster needs to review the fee schedule for our earth products removal permits. In a town that is so financially strapped, this seems like an obvious revenue generator. Since earth product removal operations have the potential to negatively impact our neighbors due to the noise, dust, and water pollution concerns, I urge the Select Board to vote against waiving the hearing for Fort Pond LLC this evening. Hearing notices are often the only way a resident would learn of a permit renewal and be able to ask questions or raise concerns. To deny residents this opportunity leaves them outside of the public process, and if residents show up, the town has not been to address their concerns. As they did with PJ Keating Review this last year, there were several new permit conditions added, bond increased, the residents were able to learn more about the operations and potential impacts via an environmental review, and the mattering questions were not small, they involved water quality, site safety, whether the appropriate environmental monitoring was in place, the residents' fears were addressed, new monitoring was implemented. If no residents turn up with questions about an earth product removal operation, then the hearing can quickly be adjourned. For tonight's hearing, the steering, the Select Board packet materials did not include a report from environmental monitors, TEG and bond, nor a record of the surety bond being paid to the town or any other department review. If not through the hearing, how can residents know if these issues have been addressed? Thank you for considering this request to preserve the hearing process in this case and in most cases, so that residents can continue to have a voice in the public approval process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and you were spot on on three minutes. That was like to the second, Justin, so...
I practiced.
Well done, well done, thank you very much. Ann Ogilvy, you're up.
Uh, thank you, Steve. Ann Ogilvy, Fort Turner Lane.
It's a big Turner Lane there.
It, you know, we're very active on Turner Lane. A group who did not like the outcome of the rezoning vote at the November 14th Lancaster Town Meeting decided they wanted another vote, so they filed a citizens' petition with the town to demand a new special town meeting. The town was obligated under the law to act and hold the special town meeting within 45 days, but they did not. Instead, they set the date of the special town meeting for Saturday, January 28th, despite the objections of community members who practiced their... despite the objections of community members who practice their religious observances on Saturdays. The planning board hearing for the citizens' petition was set for December 12th before the petition signatures were even certified, and the town paid to advertise the hearing. Not a single member of the 318 people who signed the citizens' petition would represent it at the December planning board hearing. Instead, Select Board Chair Steve Kerrigan tasked Town Administrator Kate Hodges with the job of representing the citizen petition signers at the hearing. Since the hearing, Ms. Hodges and many departments have been mobilized to prepare for a large turnout at the special town meeting. As the last meeting was recognized as such an organizational debacle by voters on all sides, much care has gone into planning this new one. How much is this costing the town? If finances are indeed our chief concern, why did the Select Board vote to hold this meeting when they had the legal attitude to delay another vote until the annual town meeting and, at the same time, seek changes to the zoning proposal to address residents' concerns? There are many reasons to object to this. I'm sorry, what was that?
Just one minute, sorry. Just wanted to give you the heads up.
There are many reasons to object to this rezoning proposal. The 2.4 million square foot mega warehouse complex will bring 7,000 to 8,000 more vehicle trips daily to Lancaster's roads by the developer's own calculations, polluting our air and water. The memorandum of agreement signed by Select Board Chair Steve Kerrigan and Jason Allison provides almost zero benefit to the town and binds us to arbitration in almost all cases of a dispute. And the town still has not bothered to undertake an independent financial analysis to support the claims of the developer that the project will bring in millions in revenue. Residents wondering about Lancaster's financial and municipal fitness should consider how this situation has played out, what corners were cut and/or justifications made, and whether officials have acted in the best interest of the town as they push this forward without even a question about the budgetary impacts of holding such a meeting.
Anne, 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 I'm going to have to stop you there.
I know, just one more thing.
No, no, Anne, sorry, you basically just accused town employees of cutting corners to, so I appreciate your comments, but I watched you dancing close to the line and then you, you went over it. But thank you, I appreciate your time.
Steve, I'd like to just finish my, my last sentence. I also object to your policing of the comments. I have not criticized. I think the citizens ought to be able to ask these questions.
I know, but.
And we should be able, what I asked was, why did you make this decision without reviewing the budgetary impact?
No, no, that's not, that's, that's a totally fair, that's not the one I was objecting to. I was objecting to you talking about town employees cutting corners, not doing their job, and to what benefit.
My statement was that residents should ask which corners were cut. That is a different thing. And I really object to your tight policing of public comment. It's an infringement upon speech. These are not complaints directed at a specific person. They're about your entire board. And I think that the town is not, residents are not being heard. You respond, you have a retort to every single thing that a person puts up in public comment, and that is not right.
Well, I, so, first of all, I understand your feeling on that. We have rules about public comment and not, I think you'll only see that I comment when people are violating the rules. I try to answer questions when I have answers to them, so I apologize if you think that's too many comments for people's comments, but I feel like that's my responsibility. If I have an answer to a question someone's raised, I'm going to answer it. But I appreciate your concerns.
Well, I do have these concerns and I ask that you review how you handle public comment. People should be allowed, the complaint policy, I don't believe was put there to stop people from complaining about things happening in town, but rather to stop them from targeting individual people.
Yes.
Right? That we should be able to speak up and to voice concerns. We cannot make things better if we cannot be heard. And if you step in after almost every single comment that opposes something that you have done, it makes it look like you don't want to hear residents' opposition.
Mr. Chair, name of the vote, please.
And it is very difficult. I would, I would really appreciate the opportunity to finish my one sentence, which did not actually forget anyone.
You've had now seven or so minutes. If you, if you want, I can let you finish after Kathy and Becca go.
That's, that sounds fine. Thank you.
Kathy, you're up. Three minutes.
Kathy Hughes, 80, Fire Road 11. It was interesting to hear about all the timing and the law requirements regarding the school committee and how things have to happen within a certain amount of days. To that point, there's a general law that requires that the Select Board hold a special town meeting within 45 days of receiving it. The town did not do that. Therefore, that town meeting should not take place based on that article. I think it's also important to note that we have already voted on that article. And while, yes, it was a debacle, that meeting, no one enjoyed it, no one who voted yes or no enjoyed it being there. And to suggest for a minute that it was a good meeting, I don't think anybody would agree with that. It does surprise me that we've gone ahead and planned another town meeting with the same article exactly. It seems wrong. It seems against the rule of law. I would, wondering what town council has had to say about both of those points. Thank you.
Okay. I'm glad to answer, if you want me to answer the question, I'm glad to. It's entirely up to you.
Yes, please, because I'd really like to know what town council has to say. Their, their views seem to be dismissed, out of hand at times, so I'd like to know.
Yeah, no, first, we, you know, this wasn't a town meeting that we chose to have. As was pointed out, 300-plus residents signed a petition, submitted them, requiring us to have it. When doing the scheduling for the meeting, the town council believed that the schedule and the date that we chose met the spirit of the law and that no petition, since no petitioner complained, they would be the aggrieved party in not hitting that 45-day window, that we were within our rights to schedule it at a time that we thought benefited the town and created the most opportunity. So that was, that was our guidance from, from council on that.
I don't think it was about the petitioners complaining, Steve.
No, no, but that's, but.
It's not in the law.
But, but, you asked what town council, Kathy, you asked.
And it's not the spirit of law.
Well, there is.
It's the law, it's the need.
Well, you asked what town council said, Kathy. So I can answer the question you asked, but I can't give you an answer they didn't give me. So that is what they told us and, and we are, we're living up to the spirit of law, so, and to what town council said, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Could Kathy?
Oh, Kathy, could you say, it's Hughes, and what's your address again, Kathy, just for the record?
My, I've said this a few times, my name is Kathy Hughes, H-U-G-H-E-S. I live at 80 Fire Road 11.
Perfect.
It is not the state road, it's a private road. It is off of Route 70.
Where, where? Thank you, Kathy. Thanks. Becca, you're up. You have three minutes. State your name and address, please.
This is Rebecca Young Jones, I'm 94 Barnes Court. This will be very short. I agree with both Kathy and Anne, and I would like to understand why, if this is our town government, you and others feel the need or right to stifle public comment. It is incredibly discouraging to every single resident, no matter what is being said, that this is not an open forum for people to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Moore, you're next. Three minutes.
Martha Moore, 131 Centridge Road. This may not be possible because I didn't ask soon enough, but I would, was wondering if, because I've heard from people who have, I know probably just about everybody on this call know people that have cancer or some equivalent disease, they're in therapy, they have to stay away from any potential infections, et cetera. And these people, because of that, they can't go to the town meeting. I have heard just this week that there have been some plans to allow for people to come into the building and be seated 10 feet apart and things like that, which is a plus. And I was wondering if we could somehow use the great system that we have figured out and planned for, for using absentee ballots or mail-in ballots or something like that. I know there's probably not time for this meeting, but I hope that can be looked into for future meetings because we are, as someone else said, disenfranchising a lot of people just because they're ill. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Martha. I will, so we do, you're right, we do have a, an online on the, on the webpage for the town. You can click and find the logistical plans for the town meeting. It delineates a very, rather large space where folks can sit 10 feet apart. There'll be PPE, available masks and whatnot for folks who want to sit far apart. For those who seek additional accommodation, if they want to reach out to Kelly Dolan or Kate tomorrow to give us enough time to meet it, they're certainly welcome to do that. But I encourage folks to look at the plans that are on the webpage, but yeah, we are, we're doing the best we can to, to create that access for folks who want to be, the room will have chairs set up 10 feet apart in every direction in a room that normally seats hundreds and hundreds of people. And there'll be a separate entrance for those folks to enter around the back of the school so they won't have to interact with folks. It'll be very separate, separate bathroom, the whole thing. Separate moderator, there'll be a police officer, the whole thing will be totally separate and set aside for folks who have that concern. You bring up a point that a lot of folks brought up about absentee ballots and whatnot. It is not consistent with our form of government to have absentee ballots or, or any of that. You can't actually even start voting until after a motion has been called, so I hear, I hear what you're saying on that. I do hope that folks that are reaching out to you or anybody who's hearing me, if you have concerns, you can utilize the plan that we have in that room with social distancing. If you need additional accommodations, please reach out to Kelly Dolan or Kate Hodges and we will work to accommodate that.
Okay, I would hope that you at least look at it in the future for having changed whatever needs to be changed so we could do absentee ballots or something.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's not allowed with our form of government that we currently are configured under to have absentee ballots. It's a, we're an open town meeting form of government, so people have to be, it's not a decision that any of us can overthrow. People have to be present to vote, so. But we, we can make accommodations if, if they meet ADA requirements, so folks should definitely reach out. But I definitely hear you. It just is, it is what it is. Deb Daramo, you have three minutes. Name and address, please.
Thank you, Steve. Deb Daramo, 127 Harvard Road. I wanted to echo what Justin Smith discussed about the earth products removal hearing. I think it's an important thing for the town people to know what's going on. I also think it's an opportunity for the town to obtain additional revenue, which is sorely needed. So I would ask that you don't waive the hearing. As far as the upcoming special town meeting, I noted on the town calendar, it was originally noted at 9:00 AM. And again, in today's agenda, your meeting, it states 9:00 AM. I think that's confusing to people.
Yes.
And it really incorrected this.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Deb. I caught that myself and Kate just said it was caught. To clarify for folks, doors open at 8:30 in the morning. The meeting itself will start after 10:00. But I appreciate the flag and we'll make sure that that's communicated to everybody.
And I, just to state my opinion, people should vote no. Memorandum of Agreement is not to the benefit of the town, it's to the benefit of the developer. And people should read it and understand it and vote no at the special town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Anne, I said I'd go back to you for your last sentence, so I'm going back to you for your last sentence. Or two, or whatever.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it. Yeah, in my letter, I was referring to the expenditure of town resources on behalf of a citizens' petition, which I think is unusual. And my last slides are, regardless of the outcome at the next special town meeting, residents would be wise to ask how well governance through radical actions such as recalls and petitions, which have led to such division in our town, are serving us. There are tools available for our use, but at what cost? Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Martha, your hand is still up. I don't know if you wanted to re-comment or didn't take your hand down. Same thing Kathy Hughes. Okay, Martha's a no. Anne, your hand is up still.
Who's the black?
I don't, no, there's a black square, but I can't see the initial, the letters.
It says KD.
KD. Kathy, yes, let's go with KD. Name and address, please.
Sure. Kendra Dickinson, 402 Open Way, speaking as a private citizen. Hold your pants on because I'm going to agree with the folks who voiced concern over waiving the public hearing for the earth products removal. I agree that, and again, hold your pants on, I agree that we should still have that meeting so that the citizens and the residents of Lancaster are aware of what's going on with that. There has been concern in the past, as we all know, and we do need to keep those residents who live in North Lancaster and other parts of town who may be interested in that loop. That being said, I appreciate all the hard work that has gone through the logistics coordination for the special town meeting that's upcoming. I am one of the people who has been historically unable to participate because it's been on a weeknight and we didn't have childcare. And if one of us could make it, both of us couldn't make it, and it was just something we had to live with. And there's a lot of folks in town who are like that also. So folks need to understand that no daytime or place is ever going to be perfect. And I don't think that our Select Board made it a point to pick that date just so that a certain group of people would have to choose whether they do their usual Saturday morning routine or deviate and go do a public service. So I appreciate all your hard work. Moving on.
Thank you. Kathy Hughes, your hand is still up. Did you have another comment? If not.
I do.
Okay.
Kathy Hughes, 80, Fire Road 11. I just, two, two brief comments. First is, I just wanted to say I was one of those people who did get very ill after the last town meeting. I also had a broken foot and felt very unsafe at that town meeting with all the chaos around. And I actually was the person who went up to the moderator to say that they had made no accommodations for anyone who was having any trouble walking around. And it should have all been done ahead of time. You anticipated the crowd because you had 1,000 ballots. So I don't understand why it went through the way it did and it was a dangerous place to be. Secondly, I am very much in disagreement with the MOA that was signed at the last minute. I asked this question a number of times, have never received an answer to it. Has there ever been any due diligence, financial due diligence on the capital group? You've made a financial arrangement with them, although money that we will undoubtedly never see because they will never completely complete that project and will therefore never get the land agreement in there. But if you are going to go into a financial arrangement with the company, you should do some due diligence, financial due diligence on them. And it seems to me as a private company that probably has not been done, it's certainly never been shared with the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, seeing no more hands in the room or online, public comment is closed. Thank you, everybody, for participating. And now we will turn to the town administrator report. Town administrator? You have three minutes. Okay. As time as you desire.
My address is 861 Georgetown Road, and I wish for this to not stay.
Okay, good. 861 Georgetown. Thank you.
Thank you. So the financial audit, the auditors are scheduled to come to review this year's audit at the board meeting on 2/27. I just need confirmation from the board that in fact you're going to hold the meeting on the 27th and not the 20th because the 20th is school vacation.
Ah, because we would normally do the 6th and the 20th?
Correct.
We haven't gotten to the scheduling that far, but we, we are going to need to, so.
Okay.
Is there an objection from my colleagues for 27?
The 27 is fine, but the 27 is fine too.
Well, the 20th is a school vacation week.
I know, I know.
It's President's Day.
Okay.
So 27.
Whenever you want to.
Yeah.
Okay, then they will be available to go through the audit.
Sounds good.
Last week, we had our initial visits from the Mass Department of Revenue, long awaited. I believe the former interim TA had talked about that, so two members of their staff came here, they interviewed the. They interviewed the finance director, treasurer collector, myself. I believe they will be connecting, if they have not already, with you, Mr. Chair, and with the finance committee chair, at least for the initial round. They have received a copy of the town code, several of the policies. And actually, I'm happy to report that evidently the last time they came in 1999, there was a very long laundry list of things that needed to be done, actually surrounding the budget process. And so I provided them a cursory look at draft number one, and we, of the 30 items that are in there, have fulfilled 20 of them. So, and I had not seen.
23 years later.
I had not seen the list, so now that I'm able to see the list of things that were there.
For the record, we were on the board when that happened. Not Jason, though. Poor fellow.
Not sure I was born yet.
Probably couldn't mount him.
Anyway, so that was a boat of good news. And other business, just to talk about the town meeting preparation. Let's see, so the team, the staff team met again today to discuss the logistics after our first round. So much has already been captured in the brochure that is online. It's on the website. We printed copies, and we have it available at the library. We have some in the community center. We have it here at the townhouse. We have it in both post office and in the church, and we have some at the school. So additional staff will be on hand to assist those that are being dropped off. We anticipate a large number of persons wanting to be dropped off at the peninsula area in front of Mary Rollinson due to parking. So we will have volunteers there that are able to help persons that are either identify as having a disability or, you know, have some other need to the front of the line. We're asking that people allow, you know, seniors and other folks to be able to jump the line if need be. Folks with children will be escorted to the check-in at the Luther Burbank entrance because childcare will be in the media center there. I would encourage people, if you know that you're going to want to participate in that, to contact the recreation division at Health and Human Services because there's only so many persons that can fit in that area. We want to make sure that we circle back on all of the different accommodations and some of the questions that we had. So I actually had a conversation with the Commission on Disability today and was able to get some, some guidance from them. They're actually going to be utilizing our handout in a training that they're doing for other communities because I think that, you know, as technology and things change, people want to be able to do more from home. And as I was explaining to some who, who ask, you know, the law hasn't quite caught up with the technology. And so we're, we're at a place where the desire to do something may not necessarily match our ability to lawfully. So, you know, there's a lot of discussions going on at the state level. And while today was the last day, or we asked that today be the last day for people to put in certain accommodations, certainly we want to receive them up to and including the day of. You know, today was the day that we felt that we had enough time if somebody were to request an interpreter or something that required some type of outside service. But certainly, we will endeavor to, to do as much as we can up until the day of, moments before. And we are putting on more officers for that day, and we'll also be having EMTs who would normally be stationed there anyway, but they'll be helping with some crowd control outside, so.
And. You sure, again, I just wanted to add to some of the prep work, but you go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just want to state for the residents listening how proud everyone should be of the work the town administrator has done.
Thanks.
I've, I've myself have seen our town staff and officials meet with the Attorney General to talk about what can and can't be done for our residents to benefit them all. That's taken a lot of time and effort, and, and maybe, maybe town staff should be, should be posting that as far as all the work that they've put in. But I can tell you that it has been an absolute number one priority in this town to do the best we can for all the residents. That said, there will never be a time where all residents are happy. My only ask to the residents that are unhappy is, is please understand we're doing our best. I think I'm in the camp that the last meeting didn't go well. But to all the residents currently unhappy, we, we've acknowledged that, and we're trying to do better. And I, I believe that that's all you can ask, is to try to be better next time. And, and the work that I've seen go in, there was a, a meeting today, I believe, to, to go through everything, the number of accommodations attempting to be made. Again, it won't be perfect. It will never be perfect. But I will, can't emphasize enough how much effort our town staff has done to try to make this the best it can for Lancaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Reminder to folks that the check-in process, one of the things we heard definitely from folks was making the check-in process more efficient. We've brought on more equipment to electronically check in people. As Kate mentioned, there'll be check-ins at every entrance for folks. One thing that you can, although you are, no one is required to show identification to participate. You just have to be looked up in the, in the voter file. It will make it easier if you present your driver's license and have it ready when you get up there to check in because they can just scan it, see that you're here, and give you your ballot and move you on in. So I would just encourage folks, be patient. Doors open at 8:30. Avail yourself of the, of the early time and get in and find a, a seat. And then be sure to, if you have a driver's license or ID and you're willing to bring it and show it, it will help move the process along at check-in when you come on, on the 28th. So, thank you. All right.
Couple of questions?
Oh, sure.
It sounds like having extra people there, which is planned for, is going to make everybody, make this process run smoother. Do we need more volunteers to service valets or to help? Should we send out the request for that kind of thing?
I think we're set now. We, we were able to, our town clerk was able to connect with some folks, and I think we're good. But I will, we'll certainly put that out if something falls through.
Okay. And just to recap, because I admit that I haven't read the parking plans well enough. In case of snow or limited parking, because it is winter, of course, with that, where should people who don't arrive at 8:30 or whatever, where should people park?
Yeah, so they can park on Main Street. They can park on Creamery Road. They can park on one side of Brazile Lane. And the mart van will be running up and down kind of a loop through all of those. So if the van sees people walking, they can pick them up and drop them at the drop-off and then go back, so.
And will, um, town council is there for the last one? I'm assuming town council will be there, I guess, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Sounds, sounds good. Thank you.
And weather is, it looks like it'll be chilly, but not quite, no large storms.
Is that like chilly 40 or is that chilly negative 10?
I'm not Al Roker, you should ask him. But it's, it's no massive snowstorm. I'm not Al Roker, no. It's shock to everybody. All right, anything else?
No.
Okay. Administration, budget and policy, Fort Pond LLC renewal permit discussion to waive a public hearing. Excuse me.
Who wants to take that?
Who put it on the agenda?
The company did, that they sent the request. It's in your packet, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
And. So this isn't to approve the, the permit at all? I mean, if you were to vote to have a hearing, we will call it appropriately, and they would appear in a couple of weeks' time after that's been called appropriately. If you vote to waive it, then the materials for its renewal will come also appropriately at another meeting.
I see. And then on license and permits, they're down there in case we do waive the public hearing to approve.
Yes, in case, in case you do. If not, it's, it's well-known that we would be, we'd be calling it, so.
Ms. Turner?
I have a question. So in our packet, we have application for special removal of earth products.
Correct.
So that is what you're referring to, that in case we don't waive the hearing, this is their application or they have to do a more formal application?
This is their renewal. Their, all their application materials, including everything that's required, is in.
The packet.
In, in the office. The public documents are in there.
Okay. Well, nobody's going to be surprised.
And the, the, my understanding is that the, the rule of thumb has been for renewals not to have another hearing. What's that?
I am told that's how it does, you can pass, but the vote to waive that has to be unanimous.
Scott?
Your vote.
To waive the hearing. Okay. Mr. Allison, do you have any comments?
So what I, what I see here is that the current, current expired October 19th, 2021.
So because of COVID?
Yeah, I got all that. But they, they haven't been in front of the board since when?
Probably.
2019.
2018, 18, yeah.
Thanks. That's all I got. My only question.
All right. So I guess we start with, is there a motion to waive a public hearing or is there not? And if there's not a motion, then we should have a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I move to schedule a public hearing for approving earth products removal.
Fort Pond LLC.
For Fort Pond LLC.
Second, second.
Is there a discussion of the motion?
I have, not a motion, but I do have questions about this after.
Okay. So all those in favor of scheduling a public hearing for renewal permit for Fort Pond LLC indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. 300 for having a public hearing. You had a question?
Yeah, since this has come up, the questions around renewal, and this has come up multiple, more than once, I refer back to advice that we got from attorney Judith, Judy Cutler, who was not with our current counsel. And it's, it's older than this. She was with Cobbleman and Page before going to land, become a land court justice. She was adamant when she spoke to us that every permit, whether it be earth removals or others, should be considered a new permit because the town would otherwise get into issues about grandfathering and so on and that you should not be deading another board. So I'd like to talk to our, I would like to ask if we, our current counsel, to see if that advice is still accurate or if things have evolved and changed and that we should be looking at renewals. In, in our time, we treated them all as new permits, but that was a long, long time ago.
A very long time.
I think I reported on this in the last meeting.
You did, but I'd like to just see if that, I think it's a fair question to say, was that attorney?
Well, I don't think that one attorney is going to.
They're not going to judge what Judy said. But that was good.
Maybe you could take this offline and figure out how you want to.
I will say also, Kate, I would love to talk with you about the fees. But I just think we at least should, Justin raised a good question about the fee schedule and things like that. I just want to make sure that we dig into it, and if we're as, as up to date as we can be, then.
No, I mean, you can, you can vote to change any of that. It, you have to go to town meeting.
Right.
So it is, it's not as simple as saying tomorrow that we're going to do X.
So we changed fees at your suggestion a little while ago. We had, without going to town meeting.
Those are not bylaw, yeah.
Okay. And our fees are set by bylaw right now?
These types.
Those are.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so Kate, you and I'll take it offline and see what we can do moving forward.
About the fees?
Oh, my God. I just flew right off my pen.
No, I think he means about, um.
That's what I'm trying to say. I, I did, I did that, and I gave you that. You want, you want me to ask for, I'm just, I'm confused about what exactly you're looking for. I told you what they said. Do you want me to ask them to do something more formal?
Well, there is what is required, and there's also what is in the best interest. Yeah, I think that, do you understand what I'm saying?
So I, I would propose that, so we've deliberated on this. It sounds like there, you may have some questions. Steve is the conduit to, the chair is the conduit to lawyers, so you should feel comfortable going offline and getting those questions, and Steve will shepherd that because it's not a deliberated topic, just the questions, and y'all can figure out which is appropriate and what's not appropriate. And that's Steve's call.
Sounds fantastic. Okay, great. Okay, um, next up, appointments and resignations. First resignation, mine, not from this board, sorry. Most people, most people who are excited about that. I'm not sorry.
Do that to me.
I know. No, from the Affordable Housing Trust as the select board's representative. There's a lot of committees and whatnot that were on, so there were conflicting times. So I'm going to resign from that. So whether you accept the resignation or not.
Is there a required vote to accept the resignation?
A motion to accept Steve Carrigan's resignation?
I'm still resigning whether you say yes or not.
No, I mean, it's been your process to.
So I'll offer a motion to accept the resignation of Steve Carrigan from the Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Second.
My brother. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going along with that, even though it's the next, um, agenda item, appointing a select board representative, I would make a motion to have Jason Allison fill the remainder of this term, which goes to the end of June 2023, on the Affordable Housing Trust on behalf of the select board.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Nope.
Okay. My computer died, so I'm definitely going to need to look at your agenda at some point. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. Congratulations. And then, yes, I, then my computer died before. I, I knew about Jason. I just, my computer died before. I could read that David Carr is resigning from the Recreation Committee effective immediately, which means we need, and we don't stand to have an appointment to that.
No, no, not yet.
So we need folks for the Recreation Committee. And also, this reminds me, Kate, maybe the next meeting, we can go through all sort of like volunteer opportunities and appointment opportunities that, that are out there. Great. That's fantastic.
So I would offer.
Okay, we have to accept it, sorry.
I would offer a motion to accept the resignation of David Carr with regret. He's done a great job.
Second.
Second, I'll, I'll say that, that Dave is a tremendous asset to the town, the, the amount of work that he does. I, I almost want to criticize him for resigning, but I mean, he does so much that I have no place to judge.
He's a one-man Recreation Committee. Yeah, he is, uh, he and his family's foundation and all the work that he does in the community is, is really amazing. Yeah, so we thank him for his service and warn him we'll be coming back at him for some other additional service.
I'm sure he will still be actively involved.
Yes. All right, so that's appointments.
Do we want to just take that vote, I think?
We're in a middle vote.
Oh, we're in a middle vote. Sorry, all those in favor of accepting David's resignation?
Aye.
Aye. Dave, you're free to go. Oh, goodness, thank you. What a good clerk.
I'm telling you.
You are so good. All right, appointment. There is an appointment of Eugene Gino Brazzo for, to the Commission on Disability for a term to expire June 30, 2023, filling an unexpired term.
I would offer a motion to appoint Gino Brazzo to, for a term to expire June 30, 2023.
To what?
The disability commission.
To the Commission on Disability.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, congratulations, Gino. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Licenses and permits, that is known or moot at this point since we're going to have a hearing about Fort Pond LLC's earth product removal. Before we go to new business communications, our next meeting will be February 6th, Monday. Special town meeting will be, doors open at 8:30, and meeting will start at 10:00, and Mary Rollinson Elementary School on Saturday, January 28th. And new business? Do you have any new business items?
I may have a scheduling conflict with the Feb. 6th.
Oh, okay.
I will get back to you.
Okay. All right.
So we already decided that the 27th would be our second meeting in February, right?
Yes.
Based on that.
Yes.
Let me just check, check our flight schedule and maybe it'll just be remote or something like that.
Oh, that's fine. That's okay. Do we have any big presentations on the 6th yet, Kate? Not that I know of, no. Yeah, so if it has to be remote, it has to be remote. It's not. Okay. Any new business?
I think I've heard that.
You don't have to come up with it. I don't want to.
No, no, I, there's a, there's a rumor going around.
Uh-oh.
That the, um, budget is, what is it, like, um, 3,000 pages? Is it about that big? I think.
Grows every day.
10 times. 136.
136 pages. I, I, I'm sorry, I'm taking some liberty here. I go back to that, to that other town meeting, and, and there was the very astute resident who said I would like.
I have the $1.
Raise it by $1. I hope he's got his reading glasses because.
For the record, um, I went back and watched that, so we, um, have, uh, that resident's information, and that resident will be receiving the first printed.
Good, good.
Happy news, thank you.
I will, I give him a lot of credit because he stood up and said what a lot of folks wanted to say, which is that we needed a more in-depth, transparent, fudging process, which you and the town staff have done a fantastic job of, of leading us through, despite the end result, which is that we don't have enough money to pay for it. Um, that is a, a story for another day, but, um, it deserves heralding, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
You're allowed to take that liberty anytime you'd like. Ms. Turner, any new business?
Sure, just a couple new, um, new-ish businesses.
New Jason.
New-ish. Um, one, uh, back in November prior to the first town meeting, I had put up some questions they had about the MOU, MOA, and sort of, um, which Kate helped me go through the slides, and didn't get the opportunity to get all the answers to those, at least to mine. Some of them were actually directed towards council, so I would ask through the chair and through the Kate, if there is an opportunity to try to get those before town meeting.
Yeah. Do you still have the questions?
Well, there was all those slides that went through, but yes, I can summarize them.
If you can send me the questions, then we can.
Okay. Um, I can get those to you.
Sure.
The other thing is that this is one of the most wonderful weeks of the year. This is MMA week. It's the, uh, our. It's the annual convention of cities and towns scheduled in Boston, and I'm going to be attending. Um, this time, um, we're departing from past tradition, and I'm going to actually be paying for my own because to honor the town's budget, a couple hundred dollars. Um, but I think it's really important because I wanna serve as the best-informed selectman that I can possibly be for people. Um, I'd like to make sure that, and knowing that big, fat budget book, that we make sure that that, I think we had talked about it in the past budget cycles, but there seemed to be some confusion, if we could make sure that that is looked at and we at least discuss the.
What does it look like?
There's a line item, you know, that was not a select board budget before. I know that you have expressed that it's been paid for through the town.
Yep.
I went through the last five years. It is not, other than staff who's in the contracts. However, I put $2,100 into a separate select board account. It was called Select Board/TA in the past, but it was only reflective of what's in the TA's contract. So I separated the two out so that it's clear. There is one for committee meetings that is generally, and then there's one specifically for MMA. So there's a few hundred dollars that's in there for other incidental meetings that board members may wish to take based on whatever's going on. And then there's one specific to MMA, and it's enough for all three members to attend, providing that passes. But that was not done in the past despite whatever assurances that it was. I, I, I.
Well, well, our recollections are a little different, but that's okay.
I wasn't here.
I know, I understand that. No, I understand that. No, no, just say the best. So that's fine. That's fine. I've been saying going forward this year, we have to make sure, and I will.
She just said, it's in the budget proposal, and if it gets passed, then it's up.
That's excellent.
I'd like to say that I, there's not a motion on the floor, but I'd be against that money being allocated for select board members to attend that training. I don't believe the town should be paying for that, but when that comes, we can, we can vote on that.
Sounds good. Um, and my, my guess is the Finance Committee will opine on that as well.
As will the voters.
As will voters. Um, okay. Any other new business?
No.
Okay. Any other, anything from anybody? About anything? Okay. Seeing none, hearing none.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none.
Let's stay a while.
Hearing none. No votes in favor. Salmon. I made mac and cheese once. For a new baby. I did too! All those in favor, okay, I guess we adjourned. We adjourned. Thanks, everybody.